And Tammy will call roll.
Bartlett?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Kittleson?
Here.
Swadley?
Here.
Borsma?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
May I ask you is absent an excuse? Engelberger?
Absent at this point.
Jensen?
Here.
Trul?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
There are ten elders present and two absent.
Thank you. Do we have any communications from our older persons this evening? Older person, Borsma.
Thank you, your honor. With some sadness, I address the passing of Mayor Helen Johnson. I was able to attend her funeral with other elders present here. Truly, Helen was a great mayor and lived a great life. Her contributions to our city will go on for years, and I just wanted to acknowledge it. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family.
Thank you. Older person, Johnson.
Thank you, your honor. I wanted just to do a shout out to the 1892 Committee. Regretfully, I didn't go to the meeting, but it sounded like they had a good turnout, and they've done a lot of work in the last year and a half to put together what the community wants as far as focus groups and meeting with businesses inside the community, outside the community. And they even got a university extension class to do a study on what would be the best solution for the high school. So, thank you very much for the people that have worked on that, and Roger Springman, and Peggy, and all the other ones. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Older person, Borsma.
Thank you, your honor, and I affirm Alder Johnson's thoughts tonight. There has been an incredible amount of work done on 1892 to look at all the possibilities of that, and it means, you know, the school board's decision about what happens with it, but a lot of work has been done, and I think very productive work.
Thank you. Further comments from our older persons? Planning Director, Shield.
Just wanted to highlight there's an open house on Tuesday, December 19th, at 6:00 PM in the Fire Department Training Room for the 2018 Street Construction Project. All properties abutting this year's projects have been, property owners and residents of those properties were mailed an invitation to attend. It's an informational opportunity to understand the scope of the work this year and learn about the project in more detail.
Great. Thanks, Rodney. What did he say about two seasons? Street construction and then street plowing, right? And we've got two seasons all taken care of. And we have an update from City Attorney Dragney regarding Landmarks Commission?
Yeah, I met with the Landmarks Commission last Thursday, I think it was, and I believe that the Landmarks Commission essentially wrapped up its work on the ordinances it's been working on relating to historic preservation. And I sent actual final revised drafts incorporating their last decisions out today, and so it looks like that's now going to move on to the Plan Commission. I think they'll be taking a look at it at their, they'll take their first look at it on January 8th, I think. And then if they're ready at that point, they'll go ahead and schedule a public hearing on the changes for their meeting in February. And if they stay on that schedule and can finish their work in February, at their February 12th meeting, I think, the soonest it would come to this body would be your second meeting in February. If the Plan Commission needs a little more time, then it'll take a little longer. But I know that Michael Stacy has been posting updates as they are coming in, so the last draft is, as I say, I sent it out today. I expect he'll, I mean, if anybody wants to see it, he can get it to you, and it'll be posted with the Plan Commission packet for the January meeting.
Great. Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our public comment period. Those wishing to speak at the public comment period have three minutes to speak. Tammy will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. So if you would approach the podium, give us your name and address. We'll start with Jim Peterson.
Hi, I'm Jim Peterson. I live at 3089 Courseview Drive, which is out near the lake. I'm here to address, well, I guess, the Recreation Department. I know Mr. Lynch is leaving and retiring, and we've worked with him and Mr. Glenn, and I'm kind of a semi-representative of the pickleball players in Stoughton, both indoors and outdoors. We've been very appreciative of the work we've had done by them in liaison with the school system to get us indoor time, and also with the city for the outdoor courts. And they have been very good whenever we've had a problem or we need equipment. We've been taken care of very well. I guess one thing, too, we're looking forward to hopefully this next year with our project to the south of us here along the river, that the pickleball end of it will move along, too. Or maybe even be separated from the whole project. I don't know how that whole thing is going, because unfortunately, I'm not in the city anymore and not following up on the city endeavors as much as I used to, so anyhow, just wanted to give a heads up to those guys, the fine job that I think they've been doing, and have been very good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Tricia Sees.
Thank you, your honor. My name is Tricia Sees. I live at 832 West Jefferson Street. Before I begin, I want to thank you all for your time and service to the city. I know that you're all thoughtful people, looking to do the best thing for the city, contributing a significant amount of your time and energy, so thank you for doing that. I speak, I'm coming to you tonight as the president of the Friends of the Gazebon Music. So, we're half of the team that puts on the Gazebon Music Summer Concert Series. We work with Tom very closely. He's the other half of the team that puts on the summer concert series, and Dan as well. And I also want to give a word of thanks to Tom for his service to the city. He's contributed greatly. He does a wonderful job. He's very easy to work with. And I'll say all of the same things about Dan. Very easy to work with. He understands what we're doing there. The transition between the two is already and would be seamless. The concert series is a huge effort. It takes a lot of people to put it together. I know that a position review is always appropriate when somebody leaves a position. That's been done. The HR director went through the paces of doing that review. Excuse me. I think it's appropriate to put Dan into the role of Director of Parks and Rec and then hire a new recreation supervisor, keeping the department's staffing levels the same, keeping all of the current duties in the department the same. Certainly tweaks to a job description can be made, but I think it would be prudent to make those while Dan is in the position. I ask you to please follow the recommendation of the HR Director, the Parks and Rec Committee, the Personnel Committee. Trust your staff. Trust your fellow elders who have already put in the work. Follow the recommendation to keep the department the same, staffing levels, job duties. Move Dan into that director position. Thank you.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Tom Lynch.
This is probably the first time I've ever actually volunteered to come up here, because it's really one of my biggest fears that I have. But knowing that it's probably my last time made it a little easier. So, and that's why I wanted to come up here, not really to address what we're talking about with the other people right now, but really to thank you guys and everybody that came before you, and thank Bob for hiring me on as a full-time. But I've been probably connected to the city for 45 years, I figure, from being a Little League umpire and working in a basketball program, parks, wastewater, and then the job that I got in 2000, which is kind of odd, because I really wasn't qualified to do parks and recreation. I'd been the parks maintenance guy, and, but the city felt that I could do that from what I had done, and I probably was never perfect for it, but I think being in it, and I got pretty good at it. And what I learned the most was that you can't do anything yourself, and it's really about all the people around you, from you guys to the staff, to all the volunteers and the people that we hire. So, it's been a really good run, and I'm retiring in January, if you didn't know that already. I think you did, but anyway, I just, I wanted to leave just by thanking all of you guys, so.
And I was remiss at not mentioning that earlier this evening. Thank you so much, Tom, for 26 years. It's older than most of us here. Wow. Twenty, how many? Forty-five, twenty. Long time. Been here way too long. Gary Birch is next registered to speak.
Good evening. Gary Birch at 1017 Highland Drive, and thank you for this opportunity. Just wanted to address the similar things that have been talked about, the recreation position. My wife and I just recently retired, and we had a choice of moving to the south or to the southwest into Arizona. We chose to stay in Stoughton, and one of those elements to stay in Stoughton was the Recreation Department. Every three or six months, that little newspaper comes out, and it shows all those lists of things that are available for not only old codgers like myself, but for young people, too. I wish I was here when I was much younger. It was a great opportunity. I have also played, I participated in pickleball games, and the people that come there, we have about 30, 35 people. We even have people from McFarland coming down to Stoughton to play. I would like to think it's because of the quality of the players, but it's also what is provided, and that can't be done without a full-time person working in the Recreation Department. Thank you much.
Thank you. And next registered is Bob Diebel.
Good evening. Bob Diebel, 316 Grant Street. My comments will be shorter than I anticipated with all the preceding speakers on the same subject with the same opinion. I'm the chairman of the Trails and River Task Force, and have worked with Tom for decades on various projects, most notably the River Trail on both sides of the river, which is in place for many years now and a great asset to the community. So I have many positive things to say about Tom and Dan Glenn as well, and his nine years with the city. But my comments really don't have to do with them personally as much as the structure or the position. I think that with what the city is facing in terms of the opportunities for the good work to be done in the Parks and Rec as far as the Kettle West development, the river redevelopment, and the continuation of the trails effort that we have in town, that we really do need a full-time position as a head of a department. And so I would say we don't have anything that's broken in town. We don't need to have it fixed, and so I urge you to stay with the same structure. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Judy Singletary.
Good evening. I live in Sun Prairie, and I am the Director of Instruction for the Stoughton Area Youth Center in Stoughton, where I have worked for 10 years, and during that time have also served on the Friends of the Board, the Board's Friends of the Stoughton Area Youth Center. And it has been my absolute privilege, I started there about 10 years ago, and have watched the evolution of a program, a facility and a program. And I've worked really closely with many volunteers, have had the benefit of meeting and encouraging benefactors who are contributing to an amazing organization. The facility was completely redesigned, and I'm so proud that the community dove in like that to a youth center. It's not junky or leftover for the middle school kids. It's a really special place for them to go. So I'm here to speak really about this gem that you have in the Stoughton community called the Youth Center, and really quite an asset, and Greg Hoyt, who works there and has worked with us all along, has recognized right away that he's a huge asset and a really important component to the success of that program. I do understand that there's some changes and transitions with Tom's retirement celebration there, but I encourage you to keep in mind a continuity of service and a continuity of the relationships that have been built between people in the city, Greg, and other members of the community who feel really strongly about serving the community, the children, and really the children's families. So, I just can't commend you strongly enough for recognizing this valuable thing and having nurtured it for all these years. Thanks.
Thank you. And that's all that I have registered. Are there others that would wish to speak during our public comment period?
Denise Duransek. I live at 324 Sherman Street. I didn't come prepared to speak on this, but when I was on the council, I actually chaired the Parks and Recs, and so I worked with Tom. And I do want to thank him for all of his work. It is greatly appreciated. He did a wonderful job, and I think that, at least my experience was, having a full-time Parks and Rec individual is extremely important. But also, when I was on the council, we redid the policy on hiring department heads, and we constructed the policy so that we would open up that position and do a search in the area, so that we would get the best person. And when I was on the library board, that's what we did. We hired, we've hired several library directors, and we would open it up. And I think that if we want the best person, that we do, you know, a search, but it has to be for a full-time person. You're not going to get the best people applying for a job if it's not going to be full-time. So, Parks and Rec is a very important component of this community, and so I would encourage you to keep it full-time and to hire the best person. It sounds like many people feel Dan is the best person, but again, we have policies in place for a reason. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak? If not, we'll move along to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening consists of the November 28th, 2017 Council Minutes, Resolution 172 of 2017, which is a resolution approving the appointment of Barbara Mason to the Commission on Aging as recommended by the Commission on Aging, and Kim Ackerman to the Utilities Committee as recommended by the Utilities Committee. Resolution 165 of 2017, appointing the election inspectors for the 2018-19 term, and Resolution 166, 2017, authorizing and directing proper city officials to issue an operator's license to Casey Dolan at BP Gas Station. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by older person Jensen? Second. Second by older person Johnson. Does any older person wish to remove an item from that consent agenda? Older person Kittleson?
Not necessarily remove an item, but I'd like to have clarification on our council minutes.
Okay, sure.
It reads discussion and possible action to cancel the December 26, 2017 council meeting due to holiday. If I remember that correctly, when we were discussing that, that also had to do, there was a communication that we didn't anticipate a very heavy docket for that meeting. It doesn't say anything in there.
Great. We can make that amendment. You bet. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Older person Engelberger?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to have 165 removed, see, so we can have a discussion.
Yep, you bet. We'll put that at the very beginning of new business. Other comments or questions? Otherwise, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Old business begins with Ordinance 19, 2017, coming from our Planning Commission. Older person Trul?
Thank you, your honor. Plan Commission brings forth Ordinance 19-2017, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of 314 West Main Street in the city of Stoughton from planned business to planned development, general development plan. Move approval.
So, motion by older person Trul. Is there a second? By older person O'Connor? Older person Trul?
As we've talked about this property before, this is the former Marathon site, and the Plan Commission is beginning the process of working with the potential developer to, again, as the packet indicates, develop two four-unit apartments on this project. And this just allows us to continue moving along that way. It's our hope that if the developer's able to bring forth proposals that gets Plan Commission and council approval, that we'll see something that'll be able to start next spring with the possible and planned completion by next fall.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Older person Reeves?
It looks like they are asking for some exceptions. I just wonder if somebody could talk about that a little bit more and the implications they're wanting to, it looks like in terms of separation distance primarily.
Yep, I think Rodney is getting ready to show us here.
This is somewhat of an illustration, well, it is an illustration that I can use to describe the exceptions. The exceptions really are maybe mislabeled, because when you create a planned district, you create the standards for the district. What it does is it compares to the multifamily residential district, so it's, if you will, if it was zoned MR10 or MR24, the setback distances would be different. So, the one exception that's outlined in there would be a comparison to allow for the setback on the Prairie Street side to be less than 25 feet, and I think the resolution calls for that to be down to 20 feet. And then the Main Street side to have this setback be reduced down to as close as 16 feet was the amount. The other, the other exception in comparison to a multifamily residential district is the distance between buildings. On a larger parcel or a parcel that was traditionally zoned MR10 or MR24, the distance between these two buildings would need to be 40 feet, and you can see that's in this draft, that would become, becomes much, much more narrow. So those, those are the differences from what a traditional multifamily residential district standard would require.
Older person Trul?
And at this time, the Plan Commission is actually trying to encourage the developer to look at, perhaps even doing more on the street front. As you see from the plans here, these units basically face each other, and I think the Plan Commission is definitely interested in making sure that the elevation to Main Street is attractive and in concert with the residential units up and down the street. The other, the other unique thing about this property is, on the right-hand side, on the east end, there is an easement that allows access to a garage that's on the adjacent property, and so that causes an additional challenge for development as a part of this, and the developer understands that and is working to incorporate that. He is not asking for a Main Street access. We have to continue to have that for the garage, but it, all of the access to this will be off Prairie Street.
Thank you. Older person Borsma?
Yes, and I would, thank you. I would direct this toward Rodney. I was just wondering, when I was reading this, as to whether or not this is a time-sensitive issue for the developer, because we are anticipating not having a city council meeting to vote on it further, because this is first reading, whether or not it's time-sensitive and if we should do something.
Actually, the second reading, so we can't take it.
The second reading? Oh, okay. Well, it is time-sensitive.
Time just goes by so fast.
Okay.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no? No. We'll do roll call.
Aye.
Kittleson?
No.
Swadley?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Motion passes 9 to 2.
Thank you. New business begins this evening with Resolution 165, 2017. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to approve it, first of all.
Second.
Motion by Engelberger, second by Swobod. Alder Person Engelberger.
Yeah, the reason I wanted to bring this out, I just, I had a, I wanted a clarification. If I, if I read it right, it looked like there were at least one or two potential candidates and/or elected officials on the list. And I just wanted to get a clarification from the attorney on what, as far as I know, there's in our political or in our state law regarding politics, a candidate can only be in the poll, polling place for so long. And if they're on the ballot, I just want a clarification of what, what the ruling is, would be from the state law, if the attorney can speak on that.
I don't know. I, I, my guess is that if you're on the ballot, you're probably not supposed to be in charge of the polling place, but it's not something I've ever looked at. So it's certainly something we can look at.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I assume that's probably the case.
So I just wanted to confirm, yeah.
Mr. McGeever seems to have some information that might be able to help.
I suspect that might be my name. As a chief inspector, it's completely inappropriate to be working on anything where you're on there. I would only be working on elections where my name is not on the ballot. And while I'm up here, we need more election inspectors, folks. Please sign up. It's good work. It's basic contribution to a basic function of the city. But yeah, no, I won't be working February or April.
And that's the reason I wanted to bring it up, just to clarify it so everybody knew. And I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Further comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 167 of 2017 comes from our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee brings forth Resolution 167, 2017, initiating planning for an amendment of tax increment District Five and a new tax increment district for the Riverfront Development Area. Finance Committee met tonight, voted four to zero to recommend approval to Council. I move for passing the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by O'Connor, second by Trul. Alder Person O'Connor?
Like I said, we met tonight. Gary Becker presented some information along with the RDA, looking forward to limiting the District Five and then implementing a new district to incorporate a different area.
Certainly. Would you like Mr. Becker to?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, TID number five is approximately 10 years old and is in a decrement situation. That is, the value today is less than the value it was, it had when it was created. We had a, some interest in a significant development earlier this year, but that has fallen apart. And we're getting into the life of the TID, 10 years out of 27, to a point where it's becoming, it's going to start hamstringing the, the city's ability to, to work with that TIF on a significant development, just because the timeframe is becoming so short. The resolution that's in front of you tonight will start in action to start thinking about subtracting the Riverfront redevelopment area away from TID number five or out of TID number five and creating a new TIF district with a 27-year life in that area. The planning process would entail coming up with a, a new plan for the area. Right now, the plan for that area is guided by the rail corridor neighborhood plan. And so we would need to come up with a new plan for the Riverfront area and then establish the TIF district around that plan. There's a timetable in your packet. There's no rush to do this. The city has time. If we wanted this new district to be a 2018 district, then we need to complete the process by September 31st of 2018. It doesn't have to be a January 1st, 2018 district. It could be January 1st, 2019, depending on how things move. So there's no urgency, but there, in terms of creating this district or making these changes happen, but I feel that we should start a planning process to rethink that Riverfront redevelopment area. And a TID planning framework is a good one for that.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Becker? Seeing Alder Person Kittleson.
So if I'm reading this correctly, he's just proposing that we try to assemble somewhere and we're not voting to say that we are doing it.
Correct. There would be, there's a public hearing required and a fair amount of work before an action can be taken to make the kind of changes we're thinking about.
Correct. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm in favor of this. The thing that I would question Gary would be, you know, we want to make sure we're not in the same boat that we're in right now. You know, why, why wouldn't we actually implement this thing once we have something going on down there, rather than maybe we'll have something going on down there? We could get in another situation where you got another seven years.
Well, I don't think we would want to create the new district unless we were confident we were about to make something happen.
Well, and I understand that, and that's, that's what we should do. I'm not, I guess I'm not sure where your timeline is here. I thought I saw a timeline here, but.
Yeah, we had a plan, about a six-month planning period, but as I said, the, there's nothing really driving that timeframe.
But as far as implementing something, I think we, it'd be nice to know that we had something going on, rather than just implement something again like we did seven years ago and don't have anything going on.
Right.
You know, so.
Alder Person Borsma.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do you have any rough estimate of how much is it going to cost the city to do it this way?
As far as the TID planning costs would be about $15,000 to $20,000. And then the other costs, so the, the city has about $1 million invested in TID number five plus land acquisition costs that are on top of that $1 million. The, there is enough development in TID number five plus another $1 to $2 million that would be needed in the next seven to 10 years to successfully close TID Five if the Riverfront redevelopment area was subtracted out of that. And so what would happen is the property acquisition would not be charged to TID Five, but it would be charged to the new TID once, once the property is sold to a developer. Then the, the land write-down is what is charged to the new TIF district.
Follow-up? So, you know, just looking at the proposal for potentially doing this and not doing this, would we be saving money not doing it, or would we be saving money in the long run by doing it?
I don't think the costs to the city are going to be significantly different one way or the other. The difference is going to be at the end of the life of TID number five. If you stick with TID Five, then it's, my projections are showing it likely that you'll still have some obligations once that TID closes. Now, you can always get a three-year extension, but the, but you're, you know, you run that risk. By creating a new district for this Riverfront redevelopment area, you avoid that risk. And so you avoid the risk of the TIF district closing with debt that would have to be paid by the general taxpayers. So I think that's the, that's the main thing. And the, giving you more flexibility as far as the timing of that district.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand that, and I agree that we probably have to change things, but when do we have to pay this $20,000 to get the, the changing of the, if we went with it? Because I'm just concerned because we don't have a lot of money right now. Can we put it on, can we put it kind of in the, somewhere in the back end and not pay upfront right away?
Well, it depends on the timing. I mean, the, the $20,000 is the cost of professional services to make this happen for the planning and the analysis and all that. So it'll, it'll be on a monthly basis over a period of a year.
Okay. So then we can wait on this just because we don't have the money? We can wait till 2019, correct?
It's up to you. Understand that planning for this area would probably.
Also be.
Put on a hold.
True, okay, got it.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the $20,000 and the whole thing, so.
Thank you. Alder Person Trul, and then Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I think the key thing is, we are, the RDA is meeting again tomorrow evening. We are trying to, since Gary made us aware of this a number of months ago, that this was a viable option, and we think it is, in fact, the best option for us in the long term. It gives us a chance to go back and, and create our vision for the property and then be able to go out again and, and try and find a developer as a part of it. As Gary mentioned, you know, timing is an important thing over the long haul. Not necessarily talking about months here as to how quickly we get through this process, but it really is a case where the abatement has started down on the Milfair property, and the overall demolition will start later on in January and probably run January into March. And at that point, we'll, we'll finally have a, an open and clear sight. And it just seems like by going through this process, it gives us the best chance to, to attract new developers, to, to get them interested and really coming back to, to working cooperatively, given our current conditions. And that's really what we haven't, we didn't do last time. We had a neighborhood plan, we had some things that had been put in place a while ago. But right now, the RDA is very much focused on what is, what, after the design charrettes and getting a lot of the community involvement, we're very much focused and re-energized in trying to create something down there. This will help us with the financial side of this in the long term. So I would encourage you to, to vote for it.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
I, Scott said it beautifully, so I have nothing more to say except that I would encourage you to vote for this. And Tammy, don't we have a little bit of this money in the budget or, because it would be a lot of Gary's time?
We had $10,000 in the budget.
So we don't.
For the RDA.
Okay.
Next year. For next year, yeah.
Some of it would may possibly be covered with the current budget, but the rest can be folded into the TIF financing.
It's TIF-eligible, but the problem, the issue is that you have to pay it upfront.
Okay.
And then when we generate increment, then it's paid back.
Okay.
Okay, Alder Person Johnson.
I'll vote for this if you guys tell me where the $20,000 is coming from.
Further questions? Alder Person Kittleson.
Maybe Scott, you can help me out, or Gary? By going to this, will this then become more attractive to developers?
Yeah, the key, and like Gary talked, from a technical standpoint, but as, the most important thing is, as he indicated, where we are in the life of the TIF. This will give us a chance to start over again and, and have a new development. Part of the reason we're underwater on this was actually the reassessment that happened on the Milfair property after the TIF district was created. There was a $2 million change in, in state assessment because they had actually argued that a lot of their personal property was, was as a part of the assessment. So, yeah, I mean, what it'll do, Dennis, is it'll give us a chance, again, as, as Michael was asking the question about the timing of when we put it in place, we'll be able to start with a, again, a brand-new timeframe, have 20, up to 27 years worth of increment that could potentially be put back into the project if we chose to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Otherwise, we'll vote by roll call.
Kittleson?
Yes.
Wadley?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to one.
Thank you. Resolution 175 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 175 dash 2017. It's a resolution authorizing the common council to conditionally approve a Class A beer and Class A liquor license to Aldi's Inc., and I would move approval.
Second.
It's a motion by Trul, second by Jensen. Alder Person Trul.
What we have is a, again, is a unique situation where we were talking about a provider, Aldi's, looking to have the ability to have, in addition to beer, to also be able to sell a limited amount of wine. And in the course of discussing their application, we identified a couple of other existing premises, existing businesses that have similar type situations where they have a, a license that would allow them to serve and, excuse me, to sell things other than wine. They actually could sell hard, hard liquor. We basically have been working with Aldi's, the chief and, and city attorney, to come up with something that would make sense in terms of allowing them to get the kind of license and have an agreement where they, again, would, would be able to sell wine and beer from their location. We've had, we've taken a strong stance over time on alcohol here in town, and so we're not going into this blindly. We were very conscious of taking a look at what the application was. Aldi's doesn't sell, a couple of things. Their, their hours of operation match our hours that, that alcohol and beer is allowed to be sold. So we didn't need to deal with some of the store within a store type discussions. Additionally, the, both the beer and the wine, they will not have, they will not be chilled, so it will be something that would be more as a part of a more conventional grocery purchase and the like, as opposed to impulse and the like. But I would encourage you to, to support this. And again, if you've got specific questions, you can also address them to the chief.
Thank you. Alder Person Bartlett.
I guess, can you clarify this for me? The way I read this, it does not authorize sale of intoxicating liquor other than wine? So this is for beer and wine? The way I read it, this is only for wine. I don't know, maybe the attorney can, or someone that's read that, I can just clarify that it is for beer and wine.
It's a Class A beer and then Class A liquor license, but the liquor would only be wine?
Just be the wine. And there's two licenses.
That's just the liquor. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Further comments or questions? Alder Person Borsma.
Thank you, Your Honor. Aldi's already sells beer in their facility. And we had some fairly serious restrictions on, on this issue of a Class A license and that for Walmart, for, for instance. And we had talked a lot about that. And my assumption would be, although I, maybe I shouldn't assume it, would be that the same restrictions that applies to the Walmart facility would apply to Aldi's if, if they were granted the same, the same license that, that Walmart is. Is that true?
No, no. I'll let Chief Leck explain, though, if you could.
Yeah, no, no, that's not true. And thus why we want the side agreement to restrict them only to wine sales and not liquor sales. The liquor designation is what makes it different than, for example, Pick 'n Save and Walmart currently.
And then one follow-up question, and that is that I'm just wondering if we're going to be opening the floodgates. I know that our lumberyard sells, sells beer, and I don't think that they're allowed to sell wine at this point, but I'm, I'm not positive about that. But are we opening ourselves up to having a, a whole, a whole number of other companies sell, sell in the same way that Aldi's is going to be selling?
Though, first of all, the lumberyard is in the township, and we don't have a control over that. That's a completely different entity. And second, I don't believe we're opening the door to anything new. We plan to make the approach to the two existing, the Co-op and the All Through the House that have a Class A liquor, but they only sell wine, and we're hoping that they'll sign on to this agreement at renewal time as well, so that we get parity throughout. This is, you know, short of the requirement of what we consider liquor stores, where we have the separate facility, whether it's a separate building or a store within a store concept.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger, and then O'Connor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I can't support this. I, it's, you know, we've got one thing for one set of grocery stores, another thing for another set of grocery stores. I, I think, I always thought Walmart and Pick 'n Save should, should be like it used to be, where you have a separate liquor store, outside entrance, not entrance through the store. Here, we don't even have a separate room, so I, I can't, I can't support this.
Thank you. Alder Person O'Connor, and then Hirsch.
Just a couple of questions. One, is there a limited number of Class A licenses available, or is it unlimited?
Unlimited.
And the next thing, is this agreement, is it a, I mean, it's a sign agreement, but is it a gentleman's agreement? Can we actually limit what they can sell by giving a Class A license? We can say you can't sell alcohol?
So the, the resolution, there are two elements of this. There's a resolution which says that the application is approved subject to certain conditions. One of the conditions is that intoxicating liquor other than wine may not be sold on the premises. And the second condition is that the applicant has to enter into this agreement. I have prepared similar agreements in other circumstances to address conditions that the community would like to attach to the approval of license. I've never had one challenged. I know that other communities use conditions of this sort. There is no case law, however, that, where the courts have said definitively that these agreements are enforceable. In my judgment, there's a pretty strong case to make that it is enforceable because the finding that the city is making here in recital C in the resolution, the city council is saying, if this is approved, is saying the common council is willing to approve the application only if it is subject to a condition that prohibits the sale of intoxicating liquors other than wine. And the city has the authority to deny, you know, an application for a Class A license. So in my view, the city has the authority to approve it subject to this kind of a condition. I think there's a pretty strong case to make that that would be legally enforceable. While I'm talking, though, I want to say one other thing. If for some reason the city council were to not approve this application, the clerk would then have a legal obligation to send notice to the applicant saying two things: your application was denied, and here's the good part, the reasons why the application was denied. So what I'm looking for is anyone who's going to vote against this to state your reasons before you vote, so the clerk has something to work with in giving the applicant notice of denial.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
Just for clarification, maybe Chief Leck or Scott, who's on Public Safety, the difference between Aldi's and Pick 'n Save and Walmart is, one, Aldi's is not going to sell hard liquor, it's only beer and wine. So it's in the same class that the Co-op and, well, Quick Trip just sells beer, so, and they don't have a room within a room, correct? And also, you were saying that Aldi's time, business time of being open and closed is within the time of being able to sell, whereas Walmart is open longer, as well as Pick 'n Save is open longer. So you have two different parameters. That is why we're justifying the difference in this resolution versus the Walmart and Pick 'n Save. So it's, they're two different things. So if Aldi's decides to do hard liquor, then we would require them to be the room within, a store within a store, if I'm understanding it correctly.
That's correct.
And so right now, we have a couple of businesses, the Co-op and All Through the House, that have already this thing, and there hasn't been a problem, if that's.
That's also correct. And there, I mean, we look at it as before the city kind of changed its concept with the, you know, separate store, store within a store concepts, those licenses that already been issued to the other two. And I guess one way to look at this, too, is it's kind of a different class of a store. You have the full service store, you have the convenience store on opposite ends, and then you have these light or smaller grocery stores that are kind of in the middle. And I, I think that this is a good compromise. We've gotten a lot of response back from the public wishing to, you know, for us to grant the license to Aldi's for the sale of wine. They're used to it in other jurisdictions. I, I think this is probably the, the best compromise agreement that we can come up with.
Is, can I just follow up? If, can we put in this resolution that, that the stores have to remain or have to close at the same time that the, being able to sell liquor closes? So if they decide to extend their hours, it's just not an automatic extension that they could, you know, have this available?
Well, they're, by state law, they're already restricted after nine o'clock for carryout. So they, they can't, neither can any of the convenience stores sell any carryout liquor after nine. liquor after 9:00 PM. So that restriction is already in place, so I don't know what other restriction you'd want in the resolution, so I think it's covered.
Okay, thank you.
I have Alderperson Boersma, Kittleson, and then Swadley.
Okay, so I will state three objections to this. One is, what was just discussed, because I think if Aldi's would determine that they wanted to stay open longer, then that would not be consistent to what other stores are doing like Walmart. And then the other one is that in the future, I think that the other stores are going to be asking for the same thing, and I do think that other, we'll get other petitions for changes in their stores. And then the third one is that I think we have a number of, a number of places selling alcohol under Class A, and I just don't know where it stops. We just keep, keep doing this. And an ancillary issue is that, you know, I think kids are in the stores, and, you know, I just don't feel like we need to do this with Aldi's. I think it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me for our city.
Thank you. Alderperson Kittleson.
Thank you. The first thing that I would want to make sure is that we know that All Through the House and the Co-op are going to sign the agreement along with this. I think it'd only be fair to know that we've got all three of them there at that point. But the other question I have is, I know, I think it was during public safety that we had an Aldi's representative come in, and he was told that you won't get the license. And the comment back to us, I do believe, maybe you can help me out, is that it doesn't fit their, we talked about the store inside a store, and he said it doesn't fit their footprint of the way their stores are built. And so he said that would be fine. They don't need the wine sales. They just wanted the beer, and they weren't worried about it. So now, all of a sudden, they're coming back and asking for this? I think we're just kind of like splitting hairs. And I really don't think it's fair to everybody else, because we're splitting hairs, and a few people in the city have sent messages that we need to give them their wine sales. Personally, I don't care. I would approve it personally, but we have to be fair to everybody, and we can't go personal opinions. We have to go by what we have written down. So I would say we have to have those two other stores first on board before this even come, or come back to us.
I'd like to have the attorney address that. I don't know that, since the city has already approved All Through the House, as well as the Co-op, the ability to sell, we've already given them their license year after year. I don't know that we can now deny, but I'll have Matt address that.
Yeah, they're entitled to renew those licenses as they exist today, which means they have the right to sell intoxicating liquors, the full slate of intoxicating liquors. I think the chief's intent is to request that they agree voluntarily to restrict their license at the time of renewal, so that it's wine only. Of course, they have no obligation to agree to that.
Thank you. I have Alderperson Swadley, and then Truul.
Thank you, your honor. I certainly understand the concern about, you know, how many places do we need in town to sell alcohol? My question was about the renewal process, which mostly covered in this particular case. If this is granted, they'll be up for renewal in, what is it, June?
Yeah, June. Every year is June.
So if we find that we have some issues there, is it difficult to not renew if we do have some challenges there, or if we...
You can only renew if they are in violation of the law. If they're operating unlawfully, and you could prove it, you know, they're violating either Chapter 125 or city ordinances relating to alcohol delivery sales, then you have a legal basis for nonrenewal. Otherwise, they're entitled to renewal.
Okay, so that would certainly cover if, for some reason, they extend their hours, and they were caught selling after hours.
If they were caught selling after hours, that would be a violation of the law and would constitute grounds for nonrenewal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Truul, and then O'Connor.
And to that point, I guess I was, as a part, as a condition of their license, does it not, in this case, indicate when it is available, when they can sell? I'm just thinking about Aldi's to this point. I mean, they've indicated that they have no desire to extend their hours, but if they did extend their hours, Matt, would they need to come back and request a modification to their, you know, in terms of any other conditions we would have? I mean, I'm trying to think...
There's no relationship between this conditional approval and their hours of operation. The legal prohibition or restrictions with respect to time of sales are kind of independent of this approval, so...
Because I think one of the things we were struggling with a little bit at public safety is thinking about the Co-op, and frankly, it was in the course of the discussion, I think most of us didn't realize that All Through the House had this kind of a license. And so we were talking about the same type of thing, because we really don't have a store within a store at the Co-op right now, and kind of how they operate. So we were trying to find a middle ground, but I certainly understand people's concerns.
Thank you. Alderperson O'Connor.
Greg, have you had any problems with All Through the House or the Co-op?
That's, no, we have not, so...
And I think Sid's right in that there will be more people asking for it, and to be quite honest, I don't have a problem with those being authorized.
Thank you. Without further comment, we'll vote by roll call. Oh, one more. Alderperson Hirsch.
I guess I still think that there's a distinct difference between Walmart and Pick 'n Save and Aldi's, is that they're doing the hard liquor. They're having smaller samples, easy for young kids to pocket, to walk out, whereas it's really hard to pocket a wine bottle or a six-pack or, it's, I think that's why we did the store within the store, if I remember right. It was the ease of access and the ease of concealability with that, especially for the young kids. I guess if we can write this resolution to, I mean, I mean, I know it says Class A liquor license, but is there a way that, is there in there that it's only, I mean, I guess I have to look at it again, that it's only wine? I mean...
Resolution C. C says only wine, right?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Under a resolution, A, B, and C, item C says only wine.
Yeah, and I think, I think the question, I think the question you're asking, maybe I'm wrong, is whether there's a way to avoid issuing a Class A license that has to be conditioned in this way to avoid intoxicating liquor?
Well, I just don't, you know, because Class A usually is hard liquor and wine, and we have this, you know, the resolution says only wine in the C. Could they contest that? Because it's, the regular license is a Class A liquor that is wine and liquor, and we're restricting that Class A license.
So the reason it's structured this way is that for the retail sale of either fermented malt beverage or intoxicating liquor and wine for off-premises consumption, we really are limited by the statutes to what's available. So one is a Class A fermented malt beverage license. That's one type. And the other, and the only other, is a Class A intoxicating liquor, which allows the sale of intoxicating liquor, including wine. There isn't just a wine license that is available for someone to apply for, so that's kind of why we're stuck with this framework. So that's why it's, that's why they applied for it that way, and that's why this is structured to say, okay, we'll approve this Class A intoxicating liquor, but only on the condition that you can sell only wine, and that you enter into a contract where you agree that that's what you're going to do.
Other communities have also done this type of arrangements. Is that true?
Certainly. Other communities attach conditions to their approval of licenses in a wider range of, a wide variety of conditions.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Boersma and then Kittleson.
Thank you, your honor. Just a quick question of Chief Leck, and that is, so I assume that Aldi's stores that are selling under the Class A or otherwise are carding people when they're coming in? Everybody? Is that correct?
I would sure hope so, and I would assume so. That's a requirement of the liquor license, that you insert that only those that are legally able to obtain alcohol obtain alcohol, otherwise it's a clear violation of the law.
Okay.
Alderperson Kittleson.
Yeah, Attorney Dragney. So if they wanted to sell liquor, if they broaden their horizons, they'd have to reapply, then, correct?
If they wanted to sell intoxicating liquor, they couldn't do that under this license.
But they, so they'd just come back and reapply?
They'd have to come back and say, please approve a Class A, unrestricted Class A, remove the condition.
And then at that time, then we would say, then you have to do the store within the store.
Yep, if you want, yep.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson O'Connor.
I'm beating this to death, but did I understand you to say that other communities have had liquor licenses where they've restricted the Class A license in this fashion?
I can't say that for certain. I know that I have seen, for example, I think the city of Madison is very active in attaching a wide array of conditions to its approval of licenses. I don't know if this specific condition is one that they've used or others have used, but I know that, for example, the Wisconsin Alcohol Policy Institute is promoting around the state actively, encouraging municipalities to use conditions in the licensing process to address local concerns. And so it is something that is happening in various communities throughout the state, that conditions are being attached. Whether this specific condition has been attached somewhere, I couldn't tell you.
Because I think of the hours that the state has set in their uniform, and we can't change those.
Madison has done that. They have attached that condition to licenses. They haven't been challenged yet. In some cases, they have done that. And they do, and they do it the same way. They say, Mr. Applicant, you have two choices. We will either deny your license, or, because we're unwilling to grant it to you unless you're willing to agree to a restriction on hours. So you can either have door number one, which is you get no license, or you can sign this contract agreeing to the condition, in which case you have door number two. You can have the license subject to this restriction on hours. And again, it's being done. It hasn't been challenged yet. It might be sometime, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll vote by roll call.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
I already did, but I'll tell them to you again afterwards.
Johnson.
Aye.
Truul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to two. Right, thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
Just to clarify my objections, in my opinion, any place that sells alcoholic beverages should be treated the same, so consistency is a problem, and they should be treated like a liquor store, period.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
And just, I want to make sure that Tammy got my objections, too. I did, okay.
Yeah, and at this point, given that it's been approved, there's no need to, it doesn't, there's no need to send anything out that says it wasn't approved.
I think you'd say two people didn't like it, but it doesn't matter. Resolution 168 of 2017 comes from a finance committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution to carry over budgeted funds from 2017 to 2018. Finance Committee met tonight, approved at four to zero. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truul. Alderperson O'Connor.
This is $24,000 carried over into 2018, $10,000 for IT purchases, and $14,000 for contractual services that we'll be discussing a little bit later.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, your honor. Just a question. I got a hard time believing this is the only two things that we're carrying over for the year. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. In fact, last year, you only carried over $5,000.
I don't believe it.
We do a good job around here. You can believe it.
We never rolled the cookie chair last week.
At least we got something to carry over.
All right. We'll vote by roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Truul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to zero. Thank you. Resolution 169 of 2017 also comes from a finance committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Resolution to approve the Focus of Energy incentive agreement for Stoughton Public Works facility. Finance Committee met tonight and are approved recommending it to Council four to zero. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Alderperson Engelberger. Alderperson O'Connor.
This is a agreement that Brett structured, so why don't you come on up and...
Thank you. For the past sixteen months, we've been working really hard with our architect on some energy-saving strategies with the new public works facility, and through those strategies, we've actually obtained a grant through Focus and Energy, and we need to sign that agreement, the initial agreement, and then once we move to construct the building, they'll come through and verify that those strategies were implemented. Then once those are verified, essentially, we'll receive a check from Focus and Energy for just over $32,000. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Alderperson Kittleson.
So you would receive that if it builds? What happens if it doesn't build?
Then it's just, it's known.
Goes away.
So there's no upfront incentive or cost that the city would incur?
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Just because I think the citizens might want to know what you're talking about, can you kind of give some examples of what you're including?
Sure. Yep, all of our lighting fixtures are all LEDs. They're all on different controls as far as sensors go. All of our HVAC systems are energy efficient. You know, we've really done a lot of things when it comes to insulation to provide, you know, keeping that building as energy efficient as possible. So, and that's also, we're also looking into solar, so this project is in addition to that, or solar is in addition to this project. So this is just for the lighting and other HVAC type systems.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Other comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Dennis, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So when you were discussing solar, there's possibility you can get more money?
Absolutely. Yep, and we're pursuing those endeavors as well.
No, he really wants to vote aye. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries. Resolution 170 of 2017 comes from our personnel committee, and I apologize, I can't remember who is our vice chair on personnel.
Johnson?
Whoops. Johnson. I'm sorry. Alderperson Johnson. This comes to you.
Our 170, 2017 resolution authorizes in directing the proper city officials to approve the hiring of the Parks Recreation Director position with no changes to the department's structure duties and to exploit the promotion of the existing recreation supervisor to the Parks and Recreation Director position. Personnel Committee approved four to one on November 27. In this meeting, we went over...
Let's get a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Johnson, second by Truul. Alderperson Johnson.
In this meeting, we went over the Parks and Recreation position. There was a lot of discussion on whether to break it apart or do multiple things, going over maybe to the public works, and so we kind of just had a discussion on that, and also on the promotion of the existing supervisor and Parks Recreation Director.
Would you like to have HR Director Gillingham come to the podium, please?
Good evening, everyone. I was asked by the committee to look at the Parks and Recreation position with the departure of Director Lynch taking place, and to look to see if there are any opportunities for realigning the responsibilities within this position. And I did meet with Director Eber and Supervisor Groom, as well as looking at the department itself as it is structured. After many discussions and looking at other options, there really wasn't anything that was viable based on our existing workload within the departments, as well as the needs and what you have set for goals for 2018 and beyond for the Parks and Recreation Department. We did identify, though, through the process, that there were some efficiencies that we could gain, and some of those were outlined in the memo that I had attached that was sent to the personnel committee as well as to you. But it did talk about the Parks Design, CIP, Trails Design Upgrade, Tournament Preparation Events, things that we could do to better partner with other departments to gain those efficiencies. In meeting with Director Lynch and Supervisor Glynn, we were looking at their positions as a whole to see if those were full-time positions, if we were able to pull those apart, and as well as Director Lynch's responsibilities at the youth center. And you heard from the public tonight in regard... in regards to the importance of those positions and the specifics of what they're looking at to grow those programs. So my recommendation after going through this process and making sure that we're properly staffed and able to move this department into the future and meet the needs of the city, was to go ahead and keep the structure as is. The second part of the resolution was talking about exploring and looking at the promotional process of Supervisor Glynn. And I think it was Denise Stranzic that spoke this evening and said that the hiring policy stated that we had to go externally, and that is incorrect. That was updated three years ago. And that hiring policy, what we changed, does not state anything about having to go externally. And our promotion process, which is also, I'm looking at here in our work rules, does allow us to go internally. So Sid was saying, when he made the initial resolution or the motion to go with an internal promotion, it was following the work rules and the hiring process for a leadership position. So we are in alliance with those policies and are following those policies. So that information was incorrect. If anybody would like to see that, I have the work rules, and you've also been given the hiring policy, which you did approve three years ago. One of the other things I wanted to talk about was the importance of what has happened in this department over the last couple of years. Director Lynch knew that he was looking at retiring. The rest of us did not. But he started working within his department and mentoring the individual, which is that supervisor, on succession planning and what would need to happen for him to take over as his successor, and also have that continuity that we talked about and the citizens talked about, as well as the institutional knowledge. So I think as we're looking at that, definitely there may be somebody out there that has more of the park side, but we need to remember that there's that institutional knowledge that is absolutely invaluable, that you're not going to find from an external candidate. And the succession planning and the mentoring that's taken place over the last couple of years, I think is invaluable to this city, and we need to look at that and realize we have nine years with an employee that has been working towards moving into this position. So again, our hiring policy does allow us to move forward with a promotion. And as we state in the resolution, we wanted to explore that and have the authorization to move forward with that.
Thank you. Alderson Borsma, and then Kittleson.
Thank you, Your Honor. In light of what our HR Director is saying, I would like to amend the motion, our Resolution of 170, 2017, to read instead that the hiring of the Parks and Recreation Director with no changes to the department's structure duties and to promote the existing recreation supervisor to the Parks and Recreation Director's position.
Is there a second? Second. It's a motion by Borsma, second by Hirsch.
And could I speak to this briefly, and that is that when I presented the motion at Personnel, I really was concerned and wondering whether or not we could actually do this promotion from within. I didn't have a clear answer from AJ. I think she was leaning toward the fact that we could do it. But I wasn't sure about that. So that's why I, my motion said explore the possibility of a promotion. In speaking with her since then, and also hearing what she said tonight, work rules allowed this to happen. I think we have a valuable employee that I would like to see that Dan promoted to that position rather than going to the outside. And that's the reason, the reason for explore was that I just wasn't sure whether this was going to work.
Thank you. Comments on the amendment on the floor at this time?
Can I discuss, discussion comment?
The amendment.
I will not be voting for the amendment. I would like to have an option to look, it just seems like this is all moving very fast. And I know, I just want to have the option to even look a little bit into the job description and even to explore other candidates, just to be sure. And I just feel that this is moving way too fast. And I know I've been told many times, we're going to lose him. He's looking for other jobs. Well, so be it. I mean, I just feel that we should be able to put it out there also. And I just feel this is moving way too fast. We haven't even been able to look at the job description. And I just feel it's being shoved down my throat. So, thank you.
Thank you. AJ wanted to comment, and then Alderson Kittleson.
I was at the same Personnel meeting as you, Alderson Johnson, and we did talk about the job description in depth and did review that. It was also sent to you ahead of time, as well as to the Council this evening, to look at. So that job description has been reviewed. And in regards to other candidates, by all means, we could definitely do that. But I don't know where you're going to find somebody who has the institutional knowledge, the relationships. We were talking about being able to get funding from places within the city that have built the relationships with both Tom and with Dan. So that's just my feedback in regards to those two points.
Alderson Kittleson.
I don't know which direction we'll be on here, but when you were talking about internal promoting, your sheet says here that there's no change in the position description, so that's why we can do internal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the other question, is Tom still here? Actually, Dan's here. I was over talking, for the reason to do this here is that I think it was extremely smart on Tom's part to start mentoring. I think that's something that the Personnel Committee should look at for the other leadership people to possibly do this. It's huge. It's important. You have seven years.
Nine.
Nine years. And then I do believe you also hold a master's, don't you? So what more could we gain? I mean, we have someone who's got the experience, the knowledge. I've experienced a bolt over the Rock Department. I've lived here my whole life. I just, and I've seen such a change in Dan that I would really welcome him to be in the position of where Tom Lynch was. I mean, he's a visionary, and he really thinks outside of the box. And I think that's something hugely important that we need. And I think that just running the risk of wanting to look at somebody else, we can lose that avenue.
Thank you. Alderson Hirsch, and then Johnson.
Thank you, and thank you AJ for putting this together and to follow what the Personnel Committee has asked you to do by looking at the other departments and coming up with a really nice summary of your findings. And also, I want to commend Director Lynch for actually being proactive and looking forward and wanting to make sure that the Park and Recs Department, when he retires, actually has a plan going forward. I mean, that's, that just says a lot for Tom because he cares so much about the city and what the Parks and Rec Department is and what he has been accomplishing. He wants to make sure it doesn't falter when he leaves. I just want to say that I've been part of the Park and Recs Committee for the last three years and have had the pleasure of working with Tom and Dan, and just think it is run very well. They accomplish a lot. I know there's been some concerns that we don't have a good park, new park planning process in place. Well, you've got to remember that, you know, for many years, there wasn't any new parks to plan. And I think if we have a problem with how current parks are being planned, that that's on us here at Council to come up with good ordinances and good policies to direct city staff to come up with a good, you know, what we envision instead of, you know, being critical of what they come up with because it doesn't meet what we envision. We need to be proactive ourselves and come up with good policies that reflect what we want. Second, I think the community knowledge, I mean, Parks and Rec is a community-building position. And Tom has done a great job, and he has kind of led the way with kind of introducing Dan to the key players in this community, and that is valuable. Last, I'm also in the RD Committee and looking at what Dan and Tom, especially Dan, have put together for the Whitewater Park that they're proposing. If we lose both of them, that may go away, and that will be a huge potential economic loss for this city. And we do not want to lose that opportunity at this stage. I mean, Dan has brought in experts from around the country, has gotten the DNR's upper level to come to the table to look at things. I mean, if we want that to go forward, we do not want to lose both of them at the same time. And just respect to efficiency, if we split that department, efficiency goes down. They have a good team, a good teamwork, shares the load, and you generate new ideas, and you want them together. So I highly recommend that, one, we keep the position as is and have a good, strong director such as Dan. And I don't think we can find a better person for, to lead the department at this point. And I think we need to, it's on us to encourage our staff. Right now, they're feeling kind of bad that we have to give them some light at the end of the tunnel that if they're good workers and they learn their job, that there is a possibility that they can be promoted at some point. We need to have that. So I highly encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Alderson Johnson, Bartlett, and Engelberger.
I am not in any way saying that Dan has not done a good job. But as far as what the job description reads, it reads Parks and Recreation Director. He has a master's in recreation. Coming from a family where a father was Parks and Planning, he did planning. And going into Tom Lynch's letter that he gave out to us, the last two parks that was done, the Nordic Ridge and the KPW, they had to hire consultants. So I am just giving you, I know I'm going to be voted down on this, but I'm just giving you the vision that I come from, from a Parks Planning, that if we go proceed on this, which I do think Dan should be ironically in this position, but we don't have the Parks Planning vision of somebody that has experience, and that's why we had to go for the last two parks to pay consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderson Bartlett.
I'm going to support the amendment, Dan, the resolution behind it as well. Last year, I've been working on the Rivers and Trails and the Parks and Rec Department. I've seen what the two positions do, and I can't imagine how we would split that off. Our other staff is also heavily loaded down. If we tried to put them in Planning Department, as I've heard proposed by a couple of times, I think the Parks Department would get diluted. They would be caught up in a lot of the other work that the other departments are already overloaded with. I support bringing Dan up. He's got the nine years' experience. He's got all the contacts locally. He's done a great job. Part of the reason my family moved here a little over four years ago was the great parks and the recreation, the opportunities for our kids and everything. So it's a great department to have. I would like to continue that. I'm worried, the initiatives that we have going on, the Whitewater Park, rebuilding Kittle Park, there's a lot of other stuff going on, working on Norse Ridge, working on trails with the county. A lot of stuff they're working on, I think, would come to a halt if we stopped to reassess this and take too much time on it. I think Dan is probably overqualified for the position. I don't think we're going to get anyone in this market at that cost to come into that, fill that position. I think we'd lose a lot of institutional knowledge, as AJ had mentioned. And also, there is a cost to doing that. I think we'd waste, around $15,000 was about the average going out. I think that would just be wasted money, and we'd end up in the same boat and even someone less qualified without those contacts for fundraising and community contacts. And then, I guess I'm just going to support this, so.
Thank you. Alderson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to thank Tom for his dedication to the city for many years, and I think he's done a great job. I think I was a chair one time of Parks and Rec, and it was a good committee. And I know they do a great job. And I think Dan also is an excellent employee of the city, and I am fully supportive of these guys. The only question I would have, and I would ask the attorney to maybe comment on this, is, you know, we're not a company. We're not a, just a bunch of private individuals that can just hire people at will. I just, I guess my question is, is it ethically proper, prudent, to just do the internal hiring rather than putting out a search like we did for Public Works?
Well, I'll just, I'll reserve my comment to, is it legal? And it's my understanding it's consistent and allowable under your policy. Whether it's prudent is for you all to decide.
Thank you. Alderson Reeves.
I, because I'm on the Parks and Rec, I feel like I'd like to at least say something. I think many on the committee have already addressed and spoken, so I'll echo those sentiments. And I think in terms of the job description, I think there can always be modifications. If we're doing our job as councilpeople and committees, we should always be looking at ways to improve, whether it's a job description or our vision. So I, it's not to say that, you know, we can't make those changes as we, you know, as necessary. But I have seen firsthand the work that these two have done. And I think one of my major concerns is not, is losing that momentum as far as our plans for the, our downtown redevelopment and the riverfront. So I think, I think we'd be making a big mistake if we didn't support this resolution.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may recall, during the budgeting process, one of the things I mentioned was succession planning. And I'm sure glad that Tom has had the foresight to recognize that and do that on his own. I'd like to see more of that in the city, as well as, you know, improving and updating job descriptions, not only when a position becomes available, but just ongoing as part of continuous improvement. You know, all things being the same, I would always promote from within. I've had a business for 14 years in Stoughton, and all my managers have been promoted from within. And I think there's a great benefit to doing that. It creates a great incentive for people to want to, to work and buy into the systems and to grow with the organization. And I think it's the same way, whether it's private or public. So I would certainly encourage to do that whenever there's a qualified candidate. Really, the only things that bother me about this is I'd love to have the opportunity to have Dan come and share his vision, like an interview would present itself. But I'm sure there will be some opportunities for him to do that, whether it's with the Whitewater Park, with the trails and other issues that come up. But I would love to hear, at some point, you know, where he is once he kind of gets grounded and what he, what he foresees happening in the future of City of Stoughton as far as our parks. One of the things I heard at the Personnel Committee meeting that was mentioned again tonight was, was the area of park planning. And I do agree that really some of that comes on to us as a council. We need to decide through policy what we want to see in our parks. And I think that we've had a couple of experiences here lately where we were presented plans by developers, and we worked through them and came up with something that I think was acceptable and to both parties. I think we could be a little more proactive than that, maybe lay down at least some basic guidelines so some of that work could be done internally instead of at council meetings or at, you know, at special meetings. So I think that that's an area of opportunity, as well as I think that there's an area where, where if, you know, if this passes, that, you know, Dan can certainly gain some experience by going to seminars and putting a training plan together to address some of the concerns that may have been brought up by some council members in that particular area of planning. Because I'm perfectly confident, confident that he's competent enough to, to learn, you know, what that's all about, what it entails, and how to make things happen. And I think, you know, it'll be better if he has council support through some policies to help guide him through these processes. And that's one thing that I think, not only with Park and Rec, but we can do better with all the departments, is to set some goals and have some expectations of what it is we're looking for and what the community values as we're going forward on some of these projects. So I support the plan. I appreciate the fact that you followed the policy, went through the process, and you've brought forth a recommendation.
Thank you. Sure.
I have one further thing to say. One of the advantages when we have an internal candidate is that they're always interviewing. We know- is that they're always interviewing. We know with an internal candidate the strengths, and we know the weaknesses of that individual. And I think that's something important to think about. I think Elder Person Swadley brought up a good point there. You know, it would have been nice to have interviewed him, but I think for the past nine years, those that have had exposure to him, as well as the support that you're seeing from his committee speaks volumes. And as an HR director, I've had four years with Dan, and well aware of what his weaknesses are and what his strengths are. And by all means, we would be able to put plans together to, to focus on those weaknesses, and also make sure we're playing on, on the strengths that he carries. So, thank you.
Thank you. So with further comment, without further comment, we'll vote first on the amendment made by Elder Person Borsma, second by Elder Person Hirsch, to amend Resolution 170, 2017. And I'm going to take a shortcut, because I think we all know what I want to say. But instead of saying to explore the promotion of the existing Recreation Supervisor to Parks and Rec Director position, to amend that to say to promote the existing Recreation Supervisor to the Parks and Recreation Director's position. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no, to the original motion made by Elder Person Johnson, seconded by Elder Person Truel, to approve Resolution 170, 2017.
As amended.
As amended. That's right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 171 of 2017 comes from our Finance Committee. Elder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 171, 2017, authorizing the award of the Shared Ride Taxi Service Contract for the City of Stoughton. Finance Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend Running Incorporated Taxi Service. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Swadley. Elder Person O'Connor.
This is in response to an RFP the city sent out periodically to review the taxi service. Two companies responded, and Finance Committee selected Running, and pretty much exactly the same criteria responses that we received. So we're pretty happy with it.
Thank you. Comments or?
Tammy's here. She could probably fill you in on what the process is from here.
The process from here will be, I've already contacted Running Incorporated to set up a meeting so that we can sit down and talk about the transition from one company to the next. We have two vans that FDS is currently leasing. Those are the two vans that we just got part of the grant program. So there's also one other vehicle that they've been leasing. It's a Crown Victoria. So we'll look into that. We'll also look into having the contract signed, and hopefully we'll have some good news about the swatch over.
Okay. Elder Person Bartlett.
How does the city costing the RFP compare to the budgeted amount for next year? Is it right on?
It's, it's, well, we've, we're waiting to find out what the number is from the grant application that we made. They usually fund approximately close to $200,000, and then the difference is funded by the city. So currently, the rates will go up slightly. They did go up even with the current vendor's proposal, so, yeah.
Do we have enough money budgeted?
Do we have enough money budgeted?
I think is the question, right?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Right? Further comments or questions? Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is the recommendation is to hire somebody, a new outfit, to replace the one we have.
Yes.
And the one we have also interviewed with this?
Yes.
Okay, so there was two that interviewed.
Yeah.
And was the question asked regarding what their practices are going to be with employees, current employees that are working for the current place? Are they going to be transferred to the other place? Are they not going to be transferred? If they are transferred, are they going to have the same wages, less wages, higher wages? Are they going to get fired like the last group did, and then get rehired at a lower rate that we didn't know was going to happen last time? That really ticked me off last time. And I'd like to know that before we vote on this.
I don't believe that.
That was not part of the RFP process. I know that we've set the meeting date to sit down with Running and find out those answers to those questions, but none of that was included.
So we don't know that. We don't know that.
The state, or the state DOT sets forward what the RFP questions can be, and that's not one of the questions that we're allowed to ask.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I can't vote on this because we don't know the answers. If we're, if we're going to have somebody come in here and, and get rid of people, say you have to, we're going to lay you off, you have to rehire or reapply if you want a job, I'm not interested in that. I want to know what they're going to do ahead of time.
According to the grant guidelines, which come to us from the state of Wisconsin, since they fund the, the majority, I mean, the huge majority of it, right, they get to identify the questions. We simply are allowed to score it, to score it, and then it's awarded to the highest scoring company.
I guess I can't vote in favor of it, then.
They did say that. They hire locally, so, but what you say could actually happen, and they could rehire the same people.
Right. We don't know.
Voting no then.
Elder Person Swadley, and then Reeves.
I think you pretty much answered it. Basically, the process is, is where the Finance Committee is given the criteria to evaluate. That's part of a score. That's also based on the criteria of, of the state, which I believe is the financial component of it. And then it's graded out, and we have no input on what is included in the RFP.
Elder Person Reeves, and then Engelberger.
Well, so Tim already told you about part of it, but one of the things that, it was a, for me, it was a very easy decision because of, one of the things that, am I free to talk about what was in that yet or not, and how I made my decision or not?
That's public, yeah.
Okay. So in terms of how they investigate accidents, what their drug and alcohol policy is, if there's an accident, what do they do? I was, to make a very long story short, I would put my family member in a car much more comfortably with the company that we chose than the, the one that we did not, because I felt like their personnel practices in terms of training. And it was just a very consistent, straightforward, if, if we as a city in terms of liability had a question about what happened in a situation, I felt very confident about, you know, what the process would be with the company that we chose. So that's, that's why I made that decision, based on not only city liability, but our community safety. So that's, that was my feedback on that.
Thank you. Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three hundred and fifty-four thousand, is that our dollar amount?
That's the total dollar amount.
And what's ours? Our portion?
Hundred and, I know that the, the state grant is somewhere between 190 and over 200, so.
So around 150 or so is our portion. And we don't have any say. The state has the say on the input. Is that accurate, attorney?
I, I'm not an expert on the program. I don't know. I haven't reviewed any of the materials, so I really can't answer the question.
Well, it's a shared ride taxi service that the City of Stoughton has participated in for the last over forty years. And since the majority of the grant money does come from the state, they do outline, or they do identify the criteria that you're allowed to choose your, your company by. And a few years ago, when we first switched from, oh, I can't remember the name of the taxi service that was in Stoughton for so many years. It's gone. I apologize for that. They came out with this particular criteria, and it was the, the scoring criteria. And you really don't have much leeway outside of what those points are and what they aren't. And, and that's how it's simply awarded. Elder Person Kittleson, and then Borsma.
We got the factor one, factor two, factor three on the two sheets for the companies, but we don't know what the questions are. And you don't have the same number of people voting. For the FDS Enterprise, factor one, there was six. Factor two, there's five. Factor three, there's five. Running Incorporated, factor one, you have six again. Factor two, there's only five names listed. And then factor three, there's only four.
That was, that was a summary of the comments that were made at the Finance Committee meeting related to those specific factors that were evaluated. Alderman Mijewski didn't have some, he had some comments on some of them, but at that evening, he hadn't turned in his evaluations. So that's why there's some comments and not others.
So in other words, you could have wrote their name in, and then just said?
No comment.
No comment.
You, you could have, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, then that way, I would have known there were six for all of them.
Sure. We just had a general discussion related to the, the items.
Is there anything that we can do as far as, like, if we utilize this company, is there any way we can get survey from the people that are actually using them?
Reference checks have been made.
I'm talking about if we have citizens that are using the company.
Oh.
And is that fall in any of the criteria for what the state says? I mean, to, to go with what Mike's saying, is that sometimes, it's the people behind the wheel that make the difference.
Right.
You know, so I mean, I don't know if there's any leeway for that or not. I mean, I can speak of one person who utilizes a taxi service who doesn't like it. But who's to say this next one they will like?
We can make a suggestion to the new company and ask them to do a survey, maybe a postcard survey where people could send their comments in.
I think it'd be nice.
Sure. Elder Person Borsma, and then Reeves.
Risking a bit of egg on my face, and that's no yolk. I, I just wonder if this is a time sensitive issue, whether or not we need to, we need to act on it right away. Or, I was just thinking about what Mike was talking about, is whether we could even ask them that question as to whether or not they're intending to promote, you know, to hire from within. But whether or not we need to do this tonight or not.
The current contract expires December 31st of this year.
Okay. And we're not meeting again, so.
Elder Person Reeves, and then Bartlett.
Just to address your concern, Elder Person Kittleson, they, they have a, a dispute resolution, you know, customer service, you know, service recovery, whatever you want to call it, that I was pretty impressed with. They also have documented very good relationships with healthcare providers. They do a lot of collaboration, so that they have specific training for people with disabilities who may have, you know, whether it's behavioral health or physical disabilities. And so they have a lot of programs in place, and they just do a lot of collaborative sort of things. So I felt like they were really in tune. They have a pretty good track record based on the information I had as far as customer service and that sort of thing, and how they follow up with, you know, complaints and that sort of thing, so.
Thank you. I have Elder Person Bartlett, and then Kittleson, and Engelberger.
I just want to say, I'm going to support this. I would like to have worker protections in there, and would like to know that it's completely budgeted. I understand why we can't control a lot of that, but there is a real need in the community for transportation services. We hear that plenty of times. So I don't know how we would provide that to some of these people that rely on the services like this if we went away from this.
This also allows a, a better cost for folks to use that service?
And for the state to pick up at least 200,000 of it, that's a pretty good deal, even though we don't have complete control over it. But I would just recommend supporting it unless you have another way to provide transportation to all the people that rely on this service.
Absolutely. Elder Person Kittleson.
Yeah, I wasn't disputing what they had sent, as far as that. I just think it would be courteous of us, as this contract goes, to give feedback, to know that we made the right decision. That's all.
Agreed. Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did my own survey about shortly after they, we approved the last one. And I walked into the office over there and talked to some of the drivers, and that's where I found out that they were laid off and had to be rehired at a lower rate. And that really bothered me. I'm a retired labor leader, and I don't take kindly to people not be, not being treated properly in the workplace. And so, it'd be nice, next time before we do this process, that try to find something out, whether we can even ask those questions.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? We'll vote by roll call.
You've hit us for the first person quite a few times in this little section here, right? Somehow, you're not spinning right, but, aye?
I blame Lana. This is her chart.
I'm sure Lana's gone.
The ghost of Lana. Aye.
Borsma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Engelberger.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Motion passes ten to one.
No, he didn't get to vote at all, did he? Did Dennis vote at all?
Did you vote?
Yeah, he did.
I think you did.
Okay, I didn't hear about it all that time. I'm sorry. All right. Resolution 173 of 2017 comes for a Finance Committee. Elder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 173, 2017, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve the environmental screening proposal for the new Public Works facility. Finance Committee met tonight and approved four to zero. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Elder Person O'Connor.
This is for abatement of the structures out at the new garage site, so.
It's, it's testing of lead, lead-based paint and asbestos materials in the, all the buildings related to the Public Works Facility relocation. We've now taken title to the last single-family home, so we can proceed with the testing and quantification of the materials, and that will be incorporated into the bid package for the overall project.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Elder Person Kittleson.
So in other words, you're asking this company to come in, they're going to do the abatement?
The testing.
The testing for it. So they'll send it to the state, and then you'll get your certificate back?
There will not be any abatement by this contractor. They'll, they'll do all the testing. They'll say you've got X square feet of this type of material, or this is where the caulk that needs to be removed. And that quantity will then be placed in the bid package for the overall construction, demolition, and construction project.
Okay. Being a little bit of experience with this, with something else, how long will this, are they going to issue, they wouldn't issue the certificate. They're just going to tell you what's in it.
That's correct.
So when you go out for bid to do this, those people will know what is there.
Yes.
Then they'll have to do that. And then by chance, if this building doesn't go through in one year, two years, are we able to get a certificate saying that all of this stuff has been done for an extended period of time?
Again, right now, this is testing and identifying what will need to be abated in the event of demolition, whenever that occurs.
So in other words, what I'm asking for will be the next phase for when it goes out, request for proposal, if the, the abatement certificates come back in an extended period of time.
Yeah, the abatement certificates will come as part of the demolition process and the removal of the materials. They'll have to do it in a certified manner. It'll be part of the publicly bid project for the overall construction. We're having the demolition and the construction of the facility all bid out publicly.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no. Resolution 174 of 2017 also comes from a Finance Committee. Elder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 174, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve contract for tree trimming services. Finance Committee met tonight and approved four to zero, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Elder Person O'Connor.
The contract calls for a bid of $21,697, which is substantially less than the $45,000 that was budgeted. Brett's here. He can share with you with what he did with the Finance Department.
So what we've done, obviously trimming our trees is critical from a risk management standpoint. And so what we did is we divided the city up into essentially five different segments. And what we're going to do is, over five years, touch each one of these segments. And this year, we're doing segment number one, and we went out for a bid and got really some pretty favorable numbers back. And so we like to move forward with, with that contract.
Thank you. Elder Person Borsma.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, just a little bit of background on this. I'm on the Tree Commission. We are a tree city. We need to keep our trees in good shape, and that includes trimming, trimming. So, and we've been discussing So, and we've been discussing this at the Tree Commission to keep up with workload. We, you know, I would like at some point to have, like, some more people in our tree department, so we could, we could do this internally. But at this point, you know, we just don't, I don't think we have the money to hire right now. And we talked about that last year. We talked about the year before. But I think to keep up with our trees, which is, which are integral to our city, and our parks, and our, and our thoroughfares, and our park rows, we need to, we need to keep trimming. And if we need to hire externally, we need to do it if we don't have enough internal staff. So I fully support this, and I think that the Tree Commission has talked about this at length. We just need to keep up with the work that we have to do in this city.
Thank you.
And to that point, this, this contract is to supplement what we already do with our internal staff. Alderman Boersma hit it right in the head, that we don't have enough staff to essentially keep up with the service level that's expected of us. And so in order to do so, we have to hire out a contract to, to meet that level of expectation.
Thank you. Alderperson Bartlett.
I guess with how great this price was, it was a half of one of them and almost a third of the other, are you comfortable with their capability and the safety record? Their references, yeah, their references did check out, and we also add into the contract that we can extend it for a second year if we feel like it's, we're providing, we're providing good service.
Great.
Thank you. Further comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Ordinance twenty of two thousand and seventeen comes from a Public Safety Committee for a first reading. Alderperson Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth for a first reading and for introduction this evening, ordinance twenty dash two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance amending chapter seventy dash one eighty-three of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to no parking from seven AM to four PM on school days on the north side of the four hundred block of North Street.
This will be back if there aren't questions. Alderperson Jensen.
Yeah, just for the chief, is this something that's time-sensitive enough that we need to waive reading?
I don't believe so. It's to rectify an issue that they're having, getting their delivery trucks into their service building.
Okay.
Right, this will be back in January. Alderperson Kittleson.
Any questions?
Basically. I mean, by, by reading this, though, and this pertains to the schools, correct?
Correct.
So to me, it would make sense if we did work on this, because they're going to go to holiday break. And in that way, when they come back, they'll know that they'll.
All right, I'll make a motion to waive, waive the reading, waive second reading.
Second.
It's a motion by Jensen, second by Truel, to waive the first reading, and approve ordinance twenty of two thousand and seventeen.
I believe that takes it to a third, right?
We'll vote by roll.
Let me make sure I got the right side.
I was going to say aye.
Everyone's looking at Dennis.
Wildly.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Truel.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one of two thousand and seventeen.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, actually, the motion, the motion was to waive, second and approve. And approve.
And approve, so I thought we did.
You did both in the motion.
You did. You were so effective. Thank you.
Very efficient.
We knew what the answer was going to be. Let's continue to move on. Ordinance twenty-one of two thousand and seventeen comes from, as a first reading from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance repealing chapter seventy dash two hundred of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the parking restrictions on Williams Drive. And we'll take this up in two weeks, or four weeks.
And this is a first reading unless others would like to make a motion.
Chief?
Well, it doesn't exist any longer, so you can, it's definitely not time-sensitive, but your minds will take care of it because the area doesn't exist any longer.
Motion to waive the first reading.
What do you mean it doesn't exist?
Motion to waive and approve? Is that what I heard, Alderperson Jensen?
Second.
Oh, right, just clarifying. Motion by Jensen, second by Truel. Comments or discussion? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I got a question on this, if I can get it up here. What's the number?
Ordinance twenty-one.
Fifteen, item fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay. My question was to the chief, number one, in its entirety, is that still accurate? Do we have in Arboretum parking area?
Not any longer. That is where the Nelson Global site is currently.
So why don't we just take that whole section out and not have that whole ordinance anymore?
That's, that's what this does, is it repeals that section.
Well, it doesn't appeal number one above it, does it?
I can't pull it up on my laptop.
It says repeal section seventy twenty-two hundred. Parking shall be prohibited on Williams Drive at the Arboretum parking area during the hours of ten AM, ten PM to seven AM. Is that staying in, you're saying?
No, that all gets repealed. All of, all of two hundred should be repealed.
Two hundred. We're eliminating this ordinance altogether.
Not just what was.
So number one is not going to be?
We're actually taking up item number one, Mike. The, the other part was.
They put the red line underneath the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
I guess I'm confused here.
What they should have done is redlined through number one. All they did is duplicate number one underneath it and redlined it.
So, so what it, what it shows up above?
Is exactly what's below.
That paragraph is no longer going to be in existence, correct?
Yeah, that whole ordinance will be gone.
Because it makes it be like, that's no longer in existence.
No.
No, it's all gone. Yeah, I know it is confusing, but it's actually.
It should be redlined then, shouldn't it?
Right.
Yep.
Alderperson Hirsch, did you have a comment?
No, that was just a clarification, I think, Chief, like, I was like, he said it doesn't exist anymore, because I didn't know that where it was. It was where Nelson Global is.
Making sure everybody's reading their packet, that's all.
No, we read it, but if you don't know where that place was in existence prior, it's hard to find it on a map, because it doesn't exist anymore.
There's a motion and a second to waive the second reading, waive the first reading and approve. As a second reading. We're kind of eliminating this whole ordinance. Let's just say we're deleting it all, and we'll move on from there, right?
Yeah.
Provin', repealing.
We're just, it's just going to be gone, okay? It's getting late, and we're all sleepy, I think. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. And I know it's, it needs a two-thirds vote.
Thank you.
We all said aye, so we're.
Sounds like two-thirds.
Sounds like two-thirds to me, yeah. Ordinance twenty-two of two thousand and seventeen comes from Public Safety as another first reading. We'll try this one, Alderperson Truel.
What's your, what's your preference here? Public Safety brings forth ordinance twenty-two dash two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance amending chapters seventy dash one ninety-eight and seventy dash one ninety-nine of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to renaming references to handicap parking to physically disabled parking.
Second. It's a motion by Truel. We're gonna, this is a first reading unless we're.
Sure, let's, that's, that's what the motion will be, to waive the first reading and to approve this.
I think we should wait for Alderperson Mijewski.
That was kind of what I was.
So he can vote on it, yeah. We should wait.
I, I was going to say, actually, that's where this came from. It just, it was, again, a previous discussion we had that Tom correctly pointed out the references, and so the chief went back and cleaned up, identified areas that we needed to clean up to refer to the physically disabled parking space or designation.
Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question. I know we're not voting on it right now, but to the chief, why, why are we saying physically disabled parking as opposed to disabled parking?
Because that's how it's referred to in the Wisconsin State chapter statutes currently, is physically disabled parking.
Is that what it says on the signs?
I don't believe so. I, I think it just says disabled parking.
Okay. I, I mean, there's a distinction between types of disabilities, and I don't think, when you get a disabled sticker on your license plate, I don't believe that distinguishes what type of disability you have, so I don't know why physical is in there. But I guess you kind of explained it.
It's a state.
Well, I, I just tried to match what the state language was, is all, so.
Okay. Alderperson Boersma.
So Chief Lock, if you could answer this, are we going to have to change all our signs?
I believe our signs are current. They, they carry the, the logo of a disabled parking stall. So I don't believe so that we have to change any of the signs.
So it's, it's going to be of no cost, you think, to the city?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
That's true. All right. This will be back in January, correct?
Okay. I'll withdraw the, the motion to waive the second, waive the first reading.
We were going to wait and allow Alderperson Mijewski to vote on it, since this was his initiative. I don't care, to be honest with you. Dennis says, let's just get it taken care of and move on.
I mean, he's in the minutes. You voted in the minutes for acknowledgement to him. So I mean, if that's what the case.
On the motion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to waive and approve. Alderperson Truel, second by Kittleson. Are we going to be bold enough as to say, all those in favor, and go for a two-thirds vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Favor, aye. All right. That's a two-thirds vote, I'd say.
It's eleven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item number seventeen is discussion in action regarding volunteer firefighter position description and work rules changed to allow volunteer firefighters to live or work in Stoughton. There are two resolutions, resolution one seventy-six and resolution one seventy-seven coming from the Personnel Committee. Alderperson Reeves is our vice chair. No, Alderperson Johnson is our vice chair.
Discussion, actually, regarding volunteer firefighter position description and work rules changed to allow firefighters to live and work in Stoughton. R one seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the amendment of the city work rules language regarding the fire volunteer emergency response time from reside to reside or work. Personnel Committee approved five to zero on November sixth.
Second. And second.
Second, and O'Connor?
Motion by Johnson, second by O'Connor. Now, these two resolutions go hand in hand. Would you like to discuss them at the same time or independently?
I would.
So would I. Same time.
The second.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
You answered yes to the same two questions, so.
One, one second. I want to know if we're going to discuss both resolutions at the same time.
Going along with that, my question would be, can we just handle both of them at the same time, make one vote?
That's what I'm asking the committee, if that's what they'd like to do, yes. Alderperson Johnson, both at the same time? Would you like to introduce resolution one seventy-seven, please?
R one seventy-seven, two thousand and seventeen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the amendment of the volunteer firefighter position description language regarding the fire volunteer emergency response time from reside to reside or work. Personnel approval five zero, and.
There's a motion by Johnson, second by Truel.
Make motion.
Alderperson Boersma would like to speak.
Just, just for everybody's understanding, I'm going to be abstaining from this, because my son works for the fire department. So I'm, I'm not going to be voting for it. And I'm going to just sit here and not talk about it.
Okey-dokey. Alderperson Kittleson.
How do we handle everybody else? Like the EMS, the police, I mean, they don't have to be here, do they?
Scott, can you help us with that one? And, and Chief Lock as well. With EMTs, how, do they have a certain, a certain response?
EMTs have, when they're on duty, and they, they are staffed completely different than we are. They have a five-minute response benchmark, so they either need to be in quarters, you know, and they have sleeping arrangements down there, or reside close enough that they can meet, that hit that five-minute benchmark. In my case, it's, we have opportunities. We do have a shortage of volunteer firefighters here. We have some opportunities to take on some individuals that are trained already as firefighters or in the city during the day. This is our way of, like, thinking outside the box, and we'll actually increase or enhance our daytime response capabilities.
Absolutely.
So the only thing you're basically adding is or work. And basically, it's the same as, like, the recreation policies, where you allow employees or people that work in the city to enjoy recreation benefits here also, so.
Sure. Alderperson Kittleson.
So in essence, what you're, I think this is what we discussed before. I'll just use Nelson or Cummings. So if people work there, and they happen to be able to fulfill this, and then they live in a different community, so you're, you're trying to get the people that live in Stoughton that work outside of Stoughton, that might be on your volunteer. You're trying to flip-flop, so you have people around.
A little bit, yeah, because there's folks here that actually live here and work in Madison.
Yeah.
And there's persons that live in Janesville and can work in Stoughton, so.
Thank you. Alderperson Truel, Jensen, and then Hirsch.
I applaud the chief for this. I, I think this is a great opportunity. I think this is also, I'm hopeful that we're going to find community-minded corporations in town, providing us with an opportunity to, to recognize that they've got talented people that can help us out. So this is a, a great initiative, and I strongly encourage everybody to support it.
Thank you. Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my full support of this. And also, I just wanted to mention to Sid that he has every right to vote on this. He does not have to abstain from this. You're receiving no financial gain, so I know I applaud you for your, your ethics, but you don't need to.
Thank you very much. I'm going to stick with my ethics.
Alderperson Hirsch.
I just, I really commend you for thinking outside the box. I know you're short. What has been the response when you've gone to the local businesses? Have you approached them yet, or are you waiting for this resolution to come forward and then?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm waiting for this resolution to move forward, so we have some assurances that we can actually make it happen. Some of my conversations with a majority of the employers is because how stressed they are. Some of them aren't willing to let their employees go. So we, the ones that are willing, those are where we have to actually capture the individuals to say, hey, you know, come, come work for us, or come volunteer for us, so.
Sure. Alderperson O'Connor.
Have you had applicants that have applied because they didn't live in the city?
Yes.
Reject them?
Yeah. We haven't rejected. We've had some circumstances where they've been selected and then, like, chose, or they applied to multiple fire departments at the, at the same time, and it was more convenient for one of our last applicants to be working in Cottage Grove when he or she actually resided in Edgerton. So, because that was his place of employment. So he was wanting to be, wanting to give, but ended up giving in the next community. So I'm sure he'll be here someday fighting a fire.
All right. Further comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Sir, I abstain.
No abstention. Thank you. One last motion.
Who's adjourned?
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
You can just stay here. You can just stay. We don't mind.
I will.